Thank you. I'll go ahead and call our November 7, 2022, City of Lawrence Common Council meeting to order. Begin with the pred- allegiance and prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Precious Father, we thank you for bringing us here tonight. Lord, I ask for, I've asked for peace over our public safety members. I ask for peace over everybody in this room, and I ask for wisdom as we continue to discuss the furtherment of our city. We thank you, Lord, for everything that you've done in your precious name. Amen.
All right, so determination of quorum. Everyone is here with Counselor Chavis on Zoom. Begin with comments of council members and special recognitions or resolutions. Do we have any?
Mr. President?
Sir.
Several years ago, well, for the last 10 years, I've been doing a lot of ride-alongs with LPD. But several years ago, I was on one ride-along, and we got called into this neighborhood off of 46th and Midhauffer, and it was a kind of a revelation to me about what really goes on with police and fire runs. And it's in an area where there's a lot of group homes, and these homes have sometimes four and five and six individuals living in them. And it was creating a huge issue with fire and police. The number of runs that were going into this community, but also many of them weren't necessarily police or fire-related. They, they're understaffed. I could go on and on, and it created a little bit of drama when I brought this up the last time, because the owners of these facilities came to this council meeting, were not happy with what I was sharing. But the reality was, is I was riding along with these police officers and multiple times getting called into these neighborhoods. So I followed up because I hadn't, I wanted to just see what was going on, because I was wanting to do a ride-along, and I was told, this was a week or so ago, that they were very short-staffed. And so when I started to probe a little bit more, they're down six or seven officers on top of a bunch of other things. And so I'm just gonna, I'll try to be brief. I know I've got my five minutes. So this is the 46th and Midhauffer. It's, the roads are Red Haven and Kling, Klingstone Court. There's just seven homes. This year to date, there's been 189 police and 112 EMS runs just in this particular area. Options Treatment Center, which is on 5602 Cato Drive, it's an inpatient mental health facility. They've had over 100 police runs and 100 EMS runs just to that facility. And so when I probed a little bit more, I'm finding out that a lot of these runs are being called into our officers and our paramedics and EMTs because of violent situations and patients are, are, they're just not able to control the patient. So they call us, and then they use our facilities or our public safety to transport these individuals to other mental health facilities or to hospitals. And so we're being used as a courier, quite frankly. And so I just wanted to bring light to this fact. I'm not sure where I'm gonna go with this or where we can go in this, but I think this is a really big issue, because this hasn't gone away. So imagine you're in a neighborhood and you call for EMS or EMT, but you find out that they can't service this because two ambulances already been dispatched to either one of these two places, and they're transporting patients to hospitals outside of Lawrence, whether it's Eskenazi or IU Health or, or whatever. So anyway, I'm gonna try to spend a little bit more time with the chief on this. I don't know that I have any solutions, but I think it's important that I bring this to all of your attention, because this impacts every one of our district. It impacts our residents, because these facilities are not doing their part to make sure that they're taking care of their properties and their residents, and they're relying on the taxpayers and public safety officials and EMSs to be able to do their work to make sure that these patients are transported or taken care of. And many of these officers, quite frankly, and I talked with them about this, they're not trained to handle some of these very, very violent and volatile situations, because most of them have to deal with mental health. So anyway, I just wanted to take this opportunity. Normally, I don't get on a soapbox about this kind of stuff, but this is very important to me, because I'm seeing the stress that's being put on our public safety officials by having to deal with all this. I mean, 100 runs to this one facility in one year. Seven homes in this one neighborhood has had over a hun- what'd I say, 189?
Group homes or something?
Yeah, 46th and Midhauffer. So anyway, I just wanted to bring this to everyone's attention, and maybe we can talk about it in the Public Safety Committee. I know we've addressed maybe some of this stuff with funding in our budget, but it's gonna take more than funding on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chevlat. I look forward to hearing the follow-up of that. Counselor Russell.
Yes, I just wanted to add on to that really quick. That is something that I've heard several times as well. And one thing to note, it is very common for a lot of facilities like this to call 911 because they don't want to wait on private transport. So it's, you know, you have the private transport option, and usually that's like, oh, that's what that's for, but we want to get rid of them now. That's, so this is a common thing, and that is a, so it's just going on with Counselor Chevlat, that this is a very big problem, because you are taking away from our tax base. So just...
Well, I'll just make one other comment. By relying on us and not their public transport option, which is what they should be doing, it doesn't cost them anything to call us. We're not, we're not billing them for this transport, but if they had to call pub or private transport, they would then be responsible for the cost of transport, the patient from point A to point B.
Great. Again, thank you for bringing that to our attention. I think it would be nice to hear more information.
I'll find more out, and maybe I'll get with Chief Woodruff, and maybe we'll bring some more information to this council.
Absolutely. Any other comments of counselors?
Mr. Chair.
Counselor Wells.
Thank you. Something I've brought up here a while back, and I see that Mr. Hoffman and Sri is in the audience, and this concerns you two gentlemen. I've had constituents ask me again and again about these dilapidated homes and about these individuals operating businesses in the residential areas. And I would really appreciate some sort of cooperation with the administration as to what, if anything, we're going to do about this. I mean, it's been, we kicked this can down the road and over into the next, into the next state by now. It, you know, my understanding is we have, you know, this is all addressed in the city code book, and, and if there's something that needs to be revised or something that needs to be tweaked, if this is something that we can do as a council to, you know, to stiffen the rules, then, you know, so be it. I'll be the first person to sponsor it. But, you know, my constituents keep asking me, when are we going to do this? I've been on the council for, what, seven years, and it's still, nothing has happened or nothing's being addressed to it. So anyway, if we could get some cooperation from the administration or just some idea of when or if we're going to start taking action on, on these, on these two situations, I would certainly appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Wells. Any other counselors? Counselor Freeman?
May I intervene on Counselor Wells, what he said about the dilapidated homes? I believe we have a code inspector or something, so when we report things, don't we report it to them? And then they have like a spreadsheet, and they have 30 days or 10 days to come, I think 30 days to come into compliance. 10 days, they send out a notice. So do we, so...
Real quick, yeah, go ahead.
So yes, we do have a compliance guy who goes out, and basically what he does is hivied and grass, trash. But this dilapidated building is a whole different thing. Unsafe building, we give, send them letters 30 days after. We send them more letters, because we can't just go in and demo this buildings. There's a lot of cost, lot of process that needs to be, but we are still looking into multiple grant opportunities to help us with that. But that's not...
Can we put liens on the property or...?
We cannot for unsafe buildings. We need to go in and demo that and then put the lien. To demo it, it's gonna take us $40,000, $50,000 to just do the environmental and demo it. And we don't have that kind of money for, you know, how 10 of those houses will cost us half a million dollars. But we are looking into grants that Indiana Housing Authority is doing to figure out what we, there are programs, like blight elimination programs that we can use. Again, we are starting to look into that more and more now.
So how many do we have on, in the City of Lawrence on the, on our books?
It's the last question, yeah.
Yeah, it's probably six or seven right now, but there is a lot more out there.
Thank you for bringing both of that up, and maybe like, like before, this might be a good topic for one of our committees or to bring up, and we could address it perhaps in administration comments. That would be great as well. So thank you, Counselor Freeman and Counselor Wells, for bringing that to our attention. Any other questions or comments? All right, see none. And we'll go to approval of minutes is still tabled. We'll come back to that at the December meeting. Signing of vouchers, approval of claims and authorization of payments. I do have a question about the vouchers and tonight's vouchers. If the deputy controller, the controller would be able to answer real quick. So hopefully, you know, if you're able to answer this question, then. We had from, with Bill Growth, who did the, the, you know, the redistricting, that, that voucher was submitted several months ago, but it's still not showing up on the claims. Do you have an idea when that voucher will be paid? We can anticipate that?
I can't find out. I don't have it on top of my head, unfortunately.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Counselor Denny, I, I just want to make sure that it's been communicated to me that that voucher has not been paid, because there is no money in the budget to pay for it. So I think it needs to be addressed more specifically. You know, we have a discretionary budget. You know, I don't, we're paying all of the, we have 50-some pages of things that we're, we're going to pay tonight. I don't understand why that voucher that was submitted in September isn't within these vouchers. It should have actually been before that. So I think it needs to be addressed more directly.
Did you understand, were you...
And I'm aware of it, so I will, she's saying, so I will check with the controller tomorrow, and, and, I think the whole idea was...
If you don't mind, there's been a few comments on Facebook they can't hear when you're out there. Do you mind stepping up to the mic? Thank you.
I think that email was sent this evening. I, I just remembered it, since Counselor Chevys just spoke about it. But I'm not aware of the discretionary budget discussion that may have happened in between that. I just happened to CC it on the email. However, we'll check with the controller tomorrow. As far as the, as far as the council's budget, I'm paying out of the council's budget, yes, the council's budget was running low, and I think that may have been the issue. Again, I'll let the controller...
I, I would be curious, because we have $250,000 in our discretionary budget line, which none of it's been touched. So I'd be curious to know what, how we couldn't pay a $5,000 invoice, when $250,000 is supposed to be there.
Again, like I said, I think I just saw that email like 4:50 this evening.
Okay.
I haven't really had a chance to look at it, and neither has the controller. So if you just, if you would allow, I would definitely lay this to the controller and then probably get back to you all via email or...
Because I'd like to see that, yeah. One that's...
Yeah, Counselor Denny, I appreciate him doing that, but I do, just for the record, that question was sent a couple weeks ago, and I have not had a discussion with the controller about the discretionary budget. That's something that was brought to my attention when I mentioned that we don't seem to have $5,000 anywhere to pay for it. So I do want to just, you know, clean that up. I have not had the discussion about the discretionary budget with the controller. I have only asked him to pay it or why it hasn't been paid, and that was a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, thank you. And I am, having heard that, I'd be concerned too, to know where our budget went from our line. If we're, if we're running out of funds and haven't spent them, you know, what's happened to our discretionary budget? Thank you, thank you. So with that, I would entertain a motion regarding the vouchers and approval of claims.
So moved.
Oh, second.
Second. So the voucher's been approved in second. Any discussion? All right, so we'll have to do a roll call vote. So start with Counselor Wells.
Yes.
Counselor Rusamoroff.
Yes.
Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Counselor Freeman.
Yes.
Counselor Chavis, don't forget, you have to do your, your video. Counselor Denny, yes?
Counselor Chavis.
Yes.
Counselor Chavis, your video's not on yet.
Yes.
There it is.
Yes.
All right, thank you. There you are. Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Chevlat?
Yes.
Thank you. So nine zero. Next on the agenda is reports of committee. The first was finance, and tonight we discussed, the only item on Finance Committee's agenda was the stormwater improvement plan grant application. It was discussed, it was a good presentation, which we'll hear a little bit more tonight, and it was recommended out of committee. Reports of committees of the whole. Proposal number 28 with the general obligation bond is still in the committee, and the elected official salary ordinance is still in committee as well. Okay, with that, the next on our agenda is public hearing for proposal number 28, 2022. Is there a signup sheet? Do we have any public comment, questions? And Chris, if you could refresh my memory, I've not done a public hearing. What's the process?
Let's see if there's any...
Okay.
No one signed.
No one signed up? Okay.
Should open and close, though.
Somebody handed me this. Is this for...
That's for the other one.
The other one?
That was, yeah. The Ocre grant one.
Oh, okay. So I just need to open the public hearing?
Yeah, I would go ahead and say, public hearing is now open. If anyone wants to speak.
Yeah. All right, with that, all right, with that, then the public hearing is now open for proposal number 28. Have anyone signed up to speak? Anyone in attendance that want to speak? Like I should use the gavel? Okay, with that, then the public hearing for proposal number 28 is closed. Move to the public hearing for resolution number 14, which is authorization of stormwater improvement plan, grant application. So the public hearing is now open.
Counselor Denny, we need to read certain things for the Ocre requirements during the public hearing process, so they're gonna do that.
Good evening, Council. Mike Klein Peter with Klein Peter Consulting Group. I'm an Ocre-certified grant administrator. The notice for the public hearing tonight was posted in the Indianapolis Star on October 27th. The purpose for the hearing is to discuss our grant application to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs. We're applying specifically for a stormwater grant in the amount of $600,000. The city will be contributing a local match of $800, $1,960 from the stormwater funds. We had a proposal due to Ocre on October 21st. We want to make sure that citizens are fully informed about the project and have an opportunity to ask any questions they may have. Funds available through the Ocre Stormwater Program are limited, and applications are very competitive. We have an application that is due on December 22nd. Award announcements will be mid-February. What happens is Ocre takes all the applications in and scores them from highest to lowest, and they start funding until they run out of funds. So you don't know exactly what score you need to get to, you just need to score as many points as possible. We need to show that this stormwater project impacts residents, so I'd encourage any residents that are in the project area to send photos or letters of support for the project. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mary Atkins to tell you about the project.
Hi, Mary Atkins with Westler Engineering, and we're working with the city to pull the engineering information together about this project. So it is the Brookside Park neighborhood, which is located just north of 52nd Street and west of Richard. And there's been historic flooding in this area, so there's not enough infrastructure in the roads to carry all the water away. There was a big flooding event back in 2011, and I know there's several residents that were impacted by that. So the proposed project is to put in new storm sewers along 54th Street, along 53rd Street, and along Kurchival Drive. And the total project cost is $1,401,960. And so that's the full project cost, and like Mike said, that we're looking for a grant of $600,000 to offset some of that total cost. But if anyone has any questions about the project, it's new storm sewers, so stormwater pipe to help flooding in that Brookside Park neighborhood.
All right, thank you. With this list, I don't...
That's a sign-in sheet Ocre requires as part of our public hearing. I just need everybody in the room to sign it.
I gotcha. Okay. Mister, I have a question. And the council members?
Yeah, council and public.
Okay. We'll definitely do that. Is there anyone in, from the public, or is any sign-in sheet for anyone that'd like to speak? Anyone in the room that'd like to make a comment?
I would.
Is it, could we make a comment during public hearing, or should we wait till we're debating during old business?
I would, if it's all right with you. I think it's proper to let, let this be from public.
That's fine.
Close it, and then during council comments, we'll do it.
I'll get to you first, Counselor Chevlat.
That's fine. My question's simple.
All right, with that, then the public hearing for resolution number 14 is closed. Moving on to unfinished business, proposal number 24, 2022.
Proposal number 24, 2022, introduced by Counselor Wells. A proposal for an ordinance establishing compensation for elected officials for the City of Lawrence, Indiana for the year 2023, and providing a time when the same shall take effect.
Okay, that's still in the committee as a whole. Next is proposal number 28.
Counselor Denny, if I can ask a question, please?
Sure.
Doesn't this have to be done for the budget process? Just all the salary ordinances for any raises for next year or no?
The elected officials, they don't have to be done until December 31 of any year.
Okay, so, all right.
It's not the November 1st line for the budget-related document.
Does that answer your question, Counselor Wells?
Yes, thank you.
Proposal number 28, 2022, introduced by Counselor Freeman. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of general obligation notes for the purpose of providing funds to pay for certain capital projects and incidental expenses in connection therewith and on account of the issuance of the notes and appropriating the process thereof.
Okay, that also is still in committee of the whole. And then next on the agenda is resolution number 14.
Resolution number 14, 2022, introduced by Counselor Freeman. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, authorizing stormwater improvement plan grant application submission and local match commitment to Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs in addressing related matters.
I will open this for discussion. Counselor Chevlat, did you have any...
Yes, I just have one question for you, young man. So the $600,000 that we're applying for, what is the total pool of money available for these grants? And then what, if you could, if you know this, I'd be really impressed. What is the amount that's being requested by all the municipalities?
Sure, that's a great question. So Ocre gets $30 million a year for water, sewer, stormwater, infrastructure, and public facilities. They don't say how much they're allocating to specific programs.
Okay.
Traditionally, I've been doing this for six years now. Traditionally, they fund two or three stormwater projects, and traditionally, there is five to seven applicants. Ocre doesn't tell you how many that have applied. I watch the public hearing notices, because you're required to do two public hearings in order to apply for the Ocre grant. So I watch the public hearing notices pretty, pretty closely. We have a site visit with Ocre, where they're gonna come next week and meet with Sri and the mayor, and I'm sure we'll ask them directly how many. I think there's less, there's less than 10 out there that have requested. I think there's like eight, so...
And we're one of the eight?
We're one of the eight. So, you know, if we're, if we're unsuccessful, which I think we've got a very strong application, I went through the scoring with Sri, and we've went through the scoring criteria to kind of see where we score high and where we can get additional points. If, for some reason, we are unsuccessful, we do two public hearings, and we can come back in the next round. There's no additional fee if you guys were to go after this grant again.
Has there ever been an opportu, or a situation where someone like Lawrence has asked for $600,000, and they came back and said, no, we're gonna go 400 or 300? So they have the ability to be able to ratchet it down but not go up?
It's usually an all or none. So that's where, when they get to the end, and they're kind of like, hey, we've got this amount of money left, is there any project that'll fit that criteria?
Got it. Thank you.
And one of the things is, in this, we look at it, we are providing more than a 50% match, because the total project is 1.4 million. We are, we are saying we will commit to $800-plus thousand, which is, which is a good thing from Ocre's scoring.
I guess that's gotta help, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Sri, in the Finance Committee meeting, you gave a little bit of a timeline. Could you reiterate that timeline for us here?
So like Mike mentioned, you know, the final application goes in December 22nd, so we are expecting an announcement around Valentine's Day of next year, around that timeframe. Once then, once it's announced, we have six months to bid the project out, and then that's, that's only the timeframe. And the good thing is, we are already, the project is currently under design, and we'll be ready to bid it by next spring. So the project is currently under designed. So, and the reason for some of this is, we never know when these grants come in, so we, we start designing on some of this. This was one of the good things we did, I did this year, is to get this going on design, so.
And I think you said August might be when the...
Yeah, if it comes out in February, you have six months from February to bid the project out. If the grant announcement comes in March, then you have six months from March to get it, project bigger. But either way, we'll be in good shape to get the project out for bid.
Perfect. Any other, yeah, Counselor Giles?
He may have answered it, but, so how would we fund this, this particular grant, this particular project, if we don't get the grant? Is it that, would we at least maybe run it twice?
Yeah, we will have to just figure it out, then, instead of now, even if it is spread between next year and the following year, I have to figure out $400,000 for each year. Now, if you don't get the grant, then it's gonna be double the money to figure it out for the next two years, so.
All right, and then when we did approve some projects earlier with the funding, was this project not in that group? Like, would we approve Rainbow Lane and...
This project was in the group for, I think, for next, next year or the following year.
Okay.
For the, for the ARP allocation, so, so that's how we, it was allocated that way.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. This is a wonderful opportunity, so I would entertain a, a motion to...
I'd like to make a motion for approval.
We have a motion for approval, and I say in a second from Counselor Wells. Okay, by roll call vote, Counselor Wells?
Yes.
Counselor Rusamoroff?
Yes.
Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Counselor Denny, yes? Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Chevlat?
Yes.
Excellent, so passes unanimous, nine zero. Awesome. We're looking forward to...
That's a good deal.
Getting some of the drainage corrected in that, that neighborhood. Say, new business, proposal number 30.
Proposal number 30, 2022, introduced by Counselor Freeman. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, amending the Lawrence Municipal Code to establish an all-way stop intersection at Barcsdale Way and Milroy Road.
Okay, that'll be assigned to Code Committee. Next on new business is proposal number 30- thirty-one.
Proposal number thirty-one, twenty-two, introduced by Counselor Denny. A proposal for an ordinance repealing Title I, Article I, Chapter Three, Section Two of the Municipal Code of the City of Lawrence, Indiana regarding governmental structure and administration.
That'll be assigned to finance. Next on the agenda is comments of the administration.
Good evening. I've got three things to discuss here. Don't worry, they're not all, it's not that thick. Just wanted to let everybody know that this November, we are honoring veterans in our community by sharing their stories and photos of our military servicemen and women, either living or deceased. If you'd like to submit a story highlighting their actions or know someone who should be highlighted, please go to the city's website for more details on how to submit that information. It's really easy. Our first military veteran that we highlighted is Carl Francis Bordenkecker. He was born on January ninth of nineteen twenty-seven and passed away unfortunately this year in January, on January fifteenth. In nineteen forty-five and nineteen forty-six, Carl served in World War II as a radio operator in the United States Navy aboard the USS Saratoga. Voices of Lawrence is a special project that we created to celebrate and share our community one voice at a time. That's what this is all part of. So please, again, visit the city's website for more information, which is frequently updated, and that is citioflawrence.org. In related news, I was personally honored to represent the city of Lawrence along with Chief of Police Gary Woodruff and Public Safety Chaplain Mel Keaton at last Friday's annual induction ceremony for the Indiana Military Veterans Hall of Fame. This year's ceremony brought honor and much deserved attention and awards to fifteen men and women who showed amazing bravery in battle while serving in, in this case, the United States Army, Navy and Air Force. The Indiana Military Veterans Hall of Fame's objective is to publicly emphasize the honor brought to our state and nation by the sacrifice of Indiana veterans, military veterans and their families. It is located right here in Lawrence on Herbert Lord Road, just south of Fifty-sixth Street, next door to the American Legion. This year's inductees and their stories can be seen alongside dozens of incredible Hoosiers who performed admirably in the theater of war. With Veterans Day, the Veterans Day holiday approaching this Friday, it's absolutely the perfect time to visit that Hall of Fame, which is free to honor our state's finest heroes. You can find all their narratives to all the inductees who are, who are highlighted there, either in person or online. And again, it's Indiana Military Veterans Hall of Fame. Just Google it. It'll go right to the website with photos. It's an amazing gem in our city. And I just wanted to highlight that, especially during this month. Finally, last Thursday, the city of Lawrence was proud to be recognized and won an award for excellence in placemaking at the annual AIM Conference. That's the Accelerate Indiana Municipalities Group, and was highlighted in front of hundreds of municipal officials from all over the state of Indiana. Our project, called Operation Fort Ben, Creating Space and Preserving History, is what the award was for and recognized the past two decades of work and vision under the guidance of the Fort Harrison Reuse Authority and the city of Lawrence at the eight hundred acres of the decommissioned military base and how it has been transformed into a vibrant, centrally located section of Lawrence. The city has invested heavily in developing quality of life amenities to make Fort Ben a fun place to live, work and play. And if you'll allow me, the video that they showed to the hundreds of attendees, I'm going to try to pull it up for you here. If I can share this screen so Counselor President Chavis can see it. And if Jared Hooton is watching, it still says, okay, there it goes. Thank you, Jared. Okay, one moment, please. Share. And I hope you all can see this at home and here in the, so this is two and a half minutes. So just bear with us and take some pride in our city because this is really cool.
In nineteen ninety-five, the city of Lawrence was dealt a challenge and an opportunity when Fort Benjamin Harrison Military Base was decommissioned. When Fort Ben closed, the city received roughly eight hundred acres of land for redevelopment. With the guidance of the Fort Harrison Reuse Authority, the city of Lawrence has created a vibrant new downtown over the past two decades. As the fort has grown, so has the demand for increased access to quality of life amenities. The city of Lawrence invested heavily in developing features over the past two years to make the former military base a fun place to live and play. The Lawrence Civic Plaza is a small park located in the heart of the fort, where the city hosts many of its regularly occurring community events. Through a partnership with the Fort Harrison Reuse Authority, Lawrence has begun to renovate a civic plaza funded in part by a DNR Land and Water Conservation Grant. The renovations include a wind tree to power all the outlets on the plaza, public seating, decorative concrete, bike racks, entry archways, walkway pergola and more. Lee Road Park was remodeled with in-house labor, on-hand materials and the city's discretionary funds to provide more recreation opportunities for visitors. The ribbon was cut this year on a brand-new eight-court pickleball facility, the first of its kind in Lawrence. To combat a loss of pollinator habitat, Lawrence repurposed five acres of Parksland to help monarch butterflies. The city planted native flowers, grasses and milkweed, which is the primary source of food for monarch caterpillars in four new butterfly and pollinator gardens. Arts for Lawrence, in partnership with the city, was awarded grant funding from the Lilly Endowment to build a state-of-the-art cultural campus. The campus opened in twenty-twenty-one and is now home to events such as Fiesta Lawrence, the Fort Ben Farmers Market, the Fridays at the Fort Summer Concert Series, Classical Music Sundays at the Fort and much more. And in October of twenty-twenty-one, the city funded and launched its first-ever bike share program. The program began with ten bikes and two docking stations, one at the Lawrence Government Center and one at the Fort Ben Cultural Campus, with plans to continue expanding the program in years to come. Great job, Lawrence, on redeveloping Fort Ben. Congratulations on your community placemaking award.
So I think everyone here is very familiar with all of the progress being made in and around the fort. But what was really cool was to see all the mayors and counselors and clerks and all the attendees who had no idea what's going on in Lawrence. And they gave us this nice little plaque that we'll hang somewhere here in the building. So I just wanted to let you all know that some good things going on. And related to Civic Plaza, this coming Thursday at three o'clock, we're going to have a ribbon cutting ceremony for the Civic Plaza and for the True Hotel by Hilton. It's supposed to be unseasonably warm and sunny. So please consider joining us for that nice celebration of some great work. And that's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is citizens' comments. Do we have anyone signed in?
We do not, sir.
All right. There's no one signed in. So our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.